Appeals. We're going to start off with some housekeeping. Uh, we have a bill for the Worcester Telegram and Gazette for the May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two legal notices for eighty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. Can I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you so much. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Aye as well. Uh, first order of business after bills is to review and approve minutes. I hope all board members have had the chance to review the March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, and the May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two minutes. If so, can I have a motion to approve all of them?
Uh, move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Aye as well. So, let's move ahead. Uh, first of all, I will be acting as the chair this evening. I'm Ms. Cassette. I'm taking over for Ms. Lynch for the evening. Uh, so all, I'd ask that all appellant speak to the board through me and any public comment that's given, um, you can do the same as well. So, let's start with our first hearing. It is to hear the appeal of Ennis Shehu at one forty East Central Street, Natick, Massachusetts, for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section four B, to construct a deck on a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling upon property located at twenty-four Oakland Avenue in the rural B district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate nineteen, plot zero-two-three-zero-zero-zero. Could the appellant please come forward to the table? Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, and just go ahead and state your name and let us know what you're here to appeal.
Yes, uh, members of the board, good evening. My name is Enis Shehu, um, a resident of the town of Natick, but also the owner of the property on, at twenty-four Oakland Ave. Um, I filed an application for sp- special permit to build a, um, a deck. Uh, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family. It's about twenty feet by eight feet size, um, new deck. Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to first ask board members if they have any clarifying questions and then we'll open it up to public comment. And I'm not gonna go round robin. You can just pipe up if you have a question.
I'm just curious, is the, um, one of the corners of the deck, is it going to overhang the wall that you have going on in the back? Is there a drop?
So, that, that, actually, that wall is gonna have to be rebuilt. Um, i- it's just gonna be the same, uh, exact location though.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll pipe up. No issues for me. Um, it doesn't look like it's going to make any structure closer to the lot line, so I don't think, from our standpoint, it makes, uh, much of a difference.
Any other comments before I add?
Um, I, I agree with that.
Okay, great. Um, so basically, you're going from a setback that's thirty-two point eight inches to one that's now twenty-four point three by adding this deck.
Correct, yeah.
And I, uh, it states that all the other setbacks will remain the same. I'd argue that the fourteen point six is going to be slightly different, but it's close enough. So, I have, um, and, and I do wanna point out to those who are present that you, uh, who may not know, you'll, I believe you'll need to go get conservation approval as well. So, you'll be going through that, and if there's anything that needs to be done with this board after that, you'll be back. Um, okay, so, do I have a, uh, oh, no, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Is there anyone present and a butter or anyone else who would like to ask a question or make a comment on this appeal? Okay, looks like there is none. So, I'm going to, uh, ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Uh, so now, let's go ahead and discuss, if anything. Uh, if, if no one has any further comment, we can go ahead and I'll entertain a motion.
Anything from planning?
Oh, I forgot.
Sorry.
Okay, great. If there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion from a member to approve.
Okay. Um, I move to approve a special permit under section four B to construct a second-story, I'm sorry, wrong spot, four B to construct a deck on a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling at twenty-four Oakland Avenue in a rural B district.
Second.
So, note it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I think I'll start with you. All right, our second public hearing of the evening is to hear the appeal of Bruno Orlandi, seventeen Emmon Street, Milford, Massachusetts, for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section four B, to construct a second-story addition on a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling upon property located at six Vinny Way in the residence B two district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate forty-five, plot zero-three-three-zero-zero-zero. Welcome.
Thank you to the chair. Um, for the record, my name is Richard Ricker and, uh, I have law offices at eleven Maple Avenue, and I'm here with Bruno Orlandi, who's the homeowner and the petitioner on this appeal. Um, this thing, this appeal, I think, is very straightforward. Um, he simply wants to put a second story on, uh, the house that's there, non-conforming already. He's not increasing, uh, any of the non-conformities. Uh, I thought we took care of this with, uh, or I thought we were gonna take care of this with the town meeting, uh, the last time we had the zoning changes, frankly. I didn't, I, I thought this was one of those ones that they took care of, but it wasn't. Um, in any event, uh, he's not increasing any of the non-conformities. It's, it's, uh, simply adding a second floor. You have the, the plans in front of you as well, as well as the elevations. Um, it's an improvement to the property. I, I don't think that there's any nuisance value to this whatsoever. I think, uh, frankly, it's an improvement to the property and, um, we'd ask for your support. If you have any questions, of course.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. McAllister, would you like to add anything before we take comment?
Um, no, I, I will say, I mean, um, Attorney Ricker makes a good point, um, regarding the town meeting. Just to clarify, our zoning enforcement officer interprets an expansion of a non-conformity, um, or the increase of a non-conformity a- as building a second story, increasing the height of a structure and the, the portion of which is outside of the setback. So, that's-
That's, that's been a, a fairly lively debate for the last couple of years with our building department. Um, as you know, the single-family and, and two-family homes are, are governed separately. Uh, sec- you know, it's, they're separated from other structures in the, um, chapter forty, uh, B, so, and forty A, so, um, it's just a healthy debate.
I appreciate that. Um, we, a few hearings ago, we, uh, were given some guidance before town meeting about handling these issues. So, thank you for coming forward. Um, we'll see if things change going forward, but I understand. Um, so, right now, you're looking to, um, cha- uh, keep the setback at thirty-five point two feet?
Yes.
Yep. And add your second story. Very simple and straightforward. Is-
Correct.
Are there any comments or questions from board members before we open it up to public comment?
Out for me?
None?
I think it looks nice.
All right, I, uh, on that note, I will go ahead and, uh, let's see, I'll read the script this time. So, this is a public hearing, so if there are any members of the public present who have a question or comment, I would like you to come forward to the microphone there, and I remind the public to please keep your questions and comments brief and to the point and to ask them through myself. So, is there anyone who wants to ask a question or make a comment? All right, there being none, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. And if there's any discussion, we can have it now, board members. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I, I can see where the building inspector is, or is coming from, but I, I don't personally think that it's going to significantly increase the non-conformity by going up, and I think visually it hangs together and, and fits with the neighborhood, so I don't have a problem with it.
Any other comments? All right, I also agree, this is a special permit. I don't think it's going to be, um, though it may add to the non-conformity by going up, I don't think it's detrimental to the existing non-conformity or any more, uh, detrimental. So, I have no issue as well. So, therefore, can I entertain a motion to approve?
I move to approve a special permit under section four B to construct a second-story addition on a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling at six Vinny Way, uh, residence B two district.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, I, I did tell him, and he'll support me. He didn't need me.
You're a good guy. It's always better to do it anyway, but yeah.
Can't hurt.
Can't hurt. All right, so we're now ready for our third public hearing to hear the appeal of WE, W E Enterprise LLC, Forty Main Street, Boylston, Massachusetts, for a special permit and variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section four B and section seven, table two, to construct a second story and a non-conforming garage addition on a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling and lot upon property located at fifteen Lakeside Drive in the residence B two district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate fifty-seven, plot zero-six-eight-zero-zero-zero. And please come forward. Thank you. The public hearing for, uh, let me see again, fifteen Lakeside Drive is a new public hearing, so thank you for coming forward and sitting at the desk there. Please introduce yourself and let us know what you're doing.
All right, uh, I'm Juan Olivera. I'm owner of, uh, the property, and I'm, uh, the contract's gonna be in work if I got approval. Well, the reason I buy the property was, that's kind of my wife dreams living Shrewsbury, and, uh, I got a, like, opportunity when the location, my brother-in-law live two streets over. So, that's one of the reasons I bought the property. And, uh, the reason I wanna, like, build a two-car garage, 'cause garage is the best, you know? I have in my old house, so that's a good reason. But I know that land is kind of too small for that. But the reason, because I already have kind of like a ramp garage on the left, existing, so it's gonna be almost the same size. So, that's the reason, um, you know, I applied for the variance to do the, the garage on the left side and as well to build a second floor, 'cause the house is too small.
Okay, um, so this is to do, to add a second-story addition, but also to add a two-car garage to the side of the house where an existing driveway, that's a, kind of like a ramp-
Correct.
Exists.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, board members, I'll, uh, actually, before, uh, we take questions from board members, uh, Ms. McAllister, is there anything you'd like to add about this appeal?
I just wanna bring the board's attention to the photos in your folder that I think are helpful in illustrating what this existing structure is. Um, it's a, right, it's, it's kind of half-buried underground, um, and so the, just to clarify further, the variance is for this attached garage, and, um, the special permit is for the second story. And I would just also remind the board and the applicant, um, to discuss a hardship when it comes to evaluating the variance, which could be through the chair at, at any point you'd like.
Okay, great. So, um, so we haven't yet, and I am not seeing anything in the materials that specifically call out a hardship aside from what you've stated in the application, and the hardship is listed as, "The setback on the west side prohibits us from building the two-car garage." So, I just wanna explain a little bit what hardship really, what kind of hardship we're really looking for. Um, the fact that that property line is where it is, is not the hardship that we could really entertain. We have to hear more about why that garage needs to go where you're proposing.
Well, uh, the house right now, they're kind of a little bit lower from the, the street, and, um, I think to kind of to see by the house on the, if you face the house to the right side, they're kind of like a two-story for garage, but they only have one car garage. And I think if, if I don't do nothing like that, I definitely have to take the ramp down, 'cause that's, they don't make no sense. I don't know why they built that. It's kind of, I don't even trust you put a car on top of that. So, in that, if I go to the other way, another thing I got in my mind was build something in the back, but I don't even have space enough as well, too. And I don't think they're gonna make no sense to put something in the back. And, uh, you know, just because I got something there, say, maybe if I can take that off and build something new, the gun, the place looks much better, you know? 'Cause right now, if you see, like, you can't kind of understand exactly what's going on there.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, I just want to explain as well to board members, uh, an additional, uh, documents been added to the file that you may not have looked at last week or, um, this weekend, um, and it is the construction plans.
Oh.
So, that may be helpful, too. So, thank you for providing the photos, um, of the existing-
Sure.
Very strange ramp with a, what is like a pseudo garage underneath, but very short.
Actually, they have a garage door in the back for some reason, but you cannot put a car there. It's kind of-
Yes, sure.
Five feet high, maybe?
Yes, yes. Very interesting property. Okay, so, um, before opening it up for public comment, do board members have any questions or comments for the appellant?
Um, I guess I'd jump in with a, with a comment. Um, I, I have to say, um, when I first looked at this, I wasn't sure I saw a hardship. The statute requires that there be something unique about the soil, the shape, or the topography of the, of the property, um, that would impose a hardship, financial or otherwise. Um, but I think I didn't fully understand what the driveway was. And looking at the driveway, another place where we can find a hardship is in relation to structures that are already existing on the lot, and that sort of bunker structure with the ramp up to it is very unusual and not something that any other, um, house in the neighborhood has. And so, I would tend to think that that could qualify as a kind of hardship, because it certainly limits your options for what you can do with the property, and it doesn't sound like it's a useful structure as it is.
And if it's not attached to the house, you have like-
Yeah, there's like a few feet-
Exactly.
In between, so it's, um, just as a practical matter, would also be a massive improvement over what is there. Um, but, you know, I'd be interested to hear what other board members have to say and what the members of the public have to say.
Thank you. Mr. McLeary, anyone else have a question or comment?
I just, uh, what would you have to do, backfill that whole thing, where you're gonna build the garage?
Um, it's, I kind of gonna go up a little. No, my, the thing is, the basement's kind of a little high from the ground, so I have to just, don't make a so-deep driveway to getting, but you talk about couple feet, maybe, one, two feet, no more than that. So, then you're gonna be like a ramp down. It's gonna be just like climb to the garage.
There's a little slope from the street down to the house, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and, but then there's the ramp.
Yeah.
So, it's sort of-
It's kind of like, yeah.
Yeah. So, maybe topography, too.
Yes, I would agree that the topography and the unique structure, um, would lend itself to hardship. Thank you. Okay, I too agree that the existing structure, um, is, and the shape of the lot and the existing house and the existing very strange structure is, is your hardship. I do have a question about the garage itself and the three-foot setback that you were asking for. I believe it's three feet. Yes.
Yeah.
Um, can you just tell us the dimensions of the garage? How big will the garage be?
They're gonna be twenty wide by twenty-four feet deep. It's gonna be kind of not flash-out in the back even. It's gonna be kind of in the middle of the house. So, they kind of, the design gonna looks a little better.
Understood.
And, uh, right now, I think it's about five feet, if I'm not wrong. I think I have here the existing-
It doesn't show you.
The existing strange structure?
Yeah, the, for the, the existing ramp or whatever.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And because of the way the house was in the lens, kind of, it'll be closer to the back from to the front.
Understood. Okay, thank you. And a twenty-foot-wide two-car garage is, I would argue, is a minimum size-
Yes, it's gonna be a single, single door, because only twenty, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so, with that, I'm going to, if there are no other questions or comments from the board, I'm going to go ahead and, uh, invite public comment. So, this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public present who have a question or a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, could, if you could please come up to the mic and state your name and address.
Paul Buttke, seventy-nine Lakeside Drive. I also own eighty-one Lakeside.
Okay.
Um, combined years up there, seventy-five years of ownership. I don't know this gentleman, but that property is in badly need of help, and it would be a great improvement for someone to take on that project. Um, maybe you know Edge Mayor has been improving all the time. Lakeside Drive, there's a lot of new homes, uh, lot of remodeling, and I think someone to grant him the permits to do it would be excellent.
Thank you so much for taking the time to come. Does anyone else have a comment? Okay, well, thank you so much. I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. And is there any discussion before we go ahead and make a motion?
I, I just think the uniqueness of that structure and the, the downward slope, plus the relatively minor relief that they're looking for, I think it comes out in the balance as being in, in line with the intention of the bylaw, so I, I would favor a variance and a special permit.
Any other comment?
Definitely will look better than it does now.
Yeah.
Yes, I agree. Um, in regard to the special permit, I believe the proposal, though it does intensify the property's non-conformity because of the second story, we didn't really talk about that. Um, I, I don't believe the change is substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformity, and it's gonna be a major improvement to that property, so I agree as well. Um, if there's no further comment, does anyone wanna make a motion? Want to make a motion to approve?
Um, should we do, vote on them separately, or can we lump it all together?
I'm fine lumping them all together. It sounds like there, there's no issue.
Okay. Um, so, I move to approve a special permit and variance, uh, under section four B and section seven, table two, to construct a second story and a non-conforming garage addition on a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling at fifteen Lakeside Drive, uh, residence B two district.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, it's time for our fourth public hearing to hear the appeal of John and Kathy Rabasco, Eight Old Faith Road, Shrewsbury, Massachusetts, for a special permit and variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section four B and section seven, table two, to demolish and reconstruct a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling and lot with a non-conforming setback upon property located at twelve Old Faith Road in the residence B two district. Subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Ta- Assessor's Tax Plate forty-seven, plot zero-zero-zero-zero-five-one. So, hello, Richard.
Thank you to the chair and, uh, members of the board again, for the record, uh, Richard Ricker. I'm an attorney with offices at eleven Maple Avenue, and I'm here with, uh, John Rabasco seated to my right. Um, Kathy is in, in the second row there. Didn't wanna sit up ta- at the table here. Can I pass out a, um?
Of course. We have to keep it if you give it to us as you know.
Yeah, that's why I made that.
Kieran and I gotta get going on here. Thank you.
That's an aerial.
Did you buy a drone?
Oh, me too.
Thank you.
We'll put it, yeah, we're just taking it for file.
So, thank you to the chair. Um, this is a, I would suggest to you, a unique property. It is, uh, non-conforming because of setbacks as well as, uh, the size of the lot. Um, it's a lot that, uh, is encumbered, as you can see from the plot plan, by a right-of-way, uh, running along the, um, the northerly sideline. And that right-of-way obviously, um, impedes the buildability of, of the lot, and, and I would suggest to you is part of the hardship here. We have a, a, a small, a small lot. Um, the Rabascos wanna, obviously, build a decent house, and they wanna build a house with a, with a two-car garage. I would suggest to you that the, um, plan that they have, um, increasing the rear yard setback, um, substantially improves the, uh, situation for them and their neighbors. Um, if you look at the aerial, you'll see how tight they are to, uh, the neighbors. Um, it, it's a, a matter of about ten feet, 'cause the neighbor there has virtually no setback. Um, it's, it's really tight. Um, I, I went over there to take pictures just because of that. Um, the, um, moving the house forward, um, I would also point out to you, um, the setback, as you can see, of the proposed attached garage would be twenty feet, um, to the, the lot line, um, a little bit further to the actual roadway, uh, but on the south side of the proposed driveway, um, that would, that measurement, uh, would be twenty-nine point oh-nine feet, so we're just under an inch short on that side. Uh, but because of the, the way Old Faith Road kind of jogs a little bit there, um, we find ourselves, uh, impacted, um, with that curve, um, causing us to have that twenty-one point four feet or the twenty feet, whichever way you look at it. I did talk to the surveyor today to get those figures, um, because I, I noted that he didn't have them on the plan. Basically, the, the hardship that we're, we're faced with here is, is obviously the, um, placement of the, the present house. We wanna do something with the present house, and we, and we have hardships either way. If you want to, um, have a house, a, a relatively reasonable-sized house, um, it's not a, not a large house, um, by any means, but if you want a reasonable-sized house, uh, and a garage on a small lot like this, then you're kind of imbedded, and you find yourself, uh, crushed. I would suggest to you that this is the best of both worlds for them. They, they would be able to get a garage, which they don't have now, um, and they would be able to get a backyard, which they don't have now. Um, and the rear yard setback that you are seeing on the revised plan, um, would be from the second-floor deck, not from the, uh, first floor. Um, you, you can see the other measurement there is forty-six point three feet to the actual structure. So, um, this is incidental to this lot. I mean, there's not a lot of lots, as you can see from the, um, aerial. There's not a lot of, uh, parcels in this neighborhood that are like this. Um, you have, uh, a house on a house, you know, fronted by another house, um, next to another house, all very, very tight in that little, little spot. And then, uh, you have the right-of-way, uh, along, as I say, the, the northerly sideline that, um, um, runs to the house on the water, uh, basically, both, both houses, um, on the water behind this. So, I would suggest to you that there's no real derogation of the bylaw here, because you have a, a situation where it's a, it's going from a small, single-family to a, to a relatively reasonable, single-family. It's still gonna be a single-family use. And, um, I would suggest further that, um, as we have discussed before, having a, you know, garage is a natural amenity for a house in New England, and, um, even in the, um, the notes that you've reviewed before from town council, uh, if this were just a non, you know, a special permit, non-conformity, then the garage wouldn't even be something that would be considered a non-conformity by virtue of just being a garage. Um, it would just be a lot, this is a single-family garage, um, a two, two-car garage. So, um, again, I would suggest there's no nuisance value here whatsoever. So, um, again, I would suggest there's no nuisance value here whatsoever. You're going from a single-family to a single-family. It's a, it's a, it remains a single-family use. And, uh, I think realistically, if you look at, um, the overall property, you look at the elevations that have, have been submitted with this, um, this is a great improvement to this property. With that, if you have any questions, you have the answer.
Thank you so much. Um, Ms. McAllister, do you have anything to add?
I don't.
Okay, great. So, um, board members, do you have any comments or questions? Let's start over here on this side.
I'll defer.
Okay, oh, sure, you want to just look a little bit further, sure.
What would the, the existing house be, that would be like, become in the backyard now?
Yes, pretty much, yes. Which they don't have now.
Right.
Obviously.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fulham, what, what was your question?
Would the existing-
I'm trying to get this picture here, that the existing house right now would become the, the backyard.
Correct, yes.
For the new, yeah.
Yeah, I like how you submitted the plot plan with the before and after, the before on top and the after. Do you have a question? Any other questions?
No, I don't.
Sort of a comment slash question.
Yep.
So I think, you know, narrow lots, um, aren't uncommon in this neighborhood. And so that might not necessarily be a hardship, but I, I think I heard you also say, though, that there's a right-of-way there.
Yes.
And that is not, uh, there are other houses in this area that have that issue, but not many. And so I would take that to be a unique feature of the lot that's a hardship. Is that?
Yes, that, that's ex, that's what I was trying to say.
I find that to be very persuasive, so.
Yes.
Thank you, that's what I was trying to say.
Yeah, no, I, I got there.
Yeah, I would argue that the shape of the land, and the size of the lot, though important, what's really interesting here is you've got two par, parcels back-to-back in this right-of-way. And what you're proposing, I feel, is, is a major improvement to what is there already. And I don't believe the change is substantially more detrimental than the current nonconformity, e, despite the fact that you're adding a new one, which is the front.
Right. We're kind of trading.
Uh, yes, you're moving things around, you're removing some, and you're adding new.
In terms of the setbacks, you couldn't really do better than what's proposed.
Right.
On this lot, so.
Okay, with that, if there's no more comments from board members, okay, um, I'm going to go ahead and, is that yours?
No.
Somebody's buzzing. So this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public present who have a question or a comment? Okay, there being none, do I have a motion to close the, the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as well. All right, if we'd like to have any discussion, let's do so. Otherwise, we'll take a motion to approve.
Um, so I'll move to approve, um, a special permit. Oh wait, this only says special permit. Is there a variance to it or not?
Uh, here, I'll give you mine. So there is a special permit and variance.
Okay, just not on the agenda.
You can just read that there. I'll give you mine.
So I move to approve a special permit and variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section four B and section seven, table two, to demolish and reconstruct a pre-existing, nonconforming, single-family dwelling and lot with a nonconforming setback upon property located at twelve Old Faith Road in the Residence B two District.
Second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm just gonna give you this. So there we go, we're on the second page. I know what it says. If you want to just announce that anyone who's finished can head out, I know there's- Oh, yeah, sure. I just wanted them to be. Sure. Um, so if you've already presented a previous appeal, and you've already heard our decision, don't feel like you have to stay. You can go ahead and leave. If you find this entertaining, please stay. All right, so let me get, uh, just let me do-
I don't think that means I can leave.
Just want to make sure, do some housekeeping here.
There were also, everything is signed.
Vote sheets for Lakeside.
Yeah, I want to make sure. We can do it at the end, too, if you'd like.
Yeah.
To just, maybe we can all wait for a second.
Yeah, we can sign it.
At the end, make sure everything's signed.
Okay, so we didn't even attempt. I'll give that to you for now. That's the two vote sheet, vote sheet. All right, so we are now moving on to our fifth public he, hearing of the evening to hear the appeal of Louven Realty LLC, forty Vinol or Vin, Vinol?
Vinyl.
Vinyl.
Vinyl, interesting spelling. Street Hudson, Massachusetts, for two variances from the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section seven E, to install signage with nonconforming sizes and setbacks upon property located at two thirty-five Main Street in the Residence B one and Rural B District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate twenty, plot zero 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 two four. And welcome, if you could, oh, it's Richard. Hi again.
Thank you, the chair, members of the board, again, for the record. Uh, my name is Richard Ricker, and, um, my law offices are at eleven Maple Avenue. I'm he, I'm here with Vin Messina, who is the manager of the LLC that is the applicant. I'm sure you're familiar with the beautiful office building that he's built on this site.
I am.
It's nearing completion, um, and, um, I, I'm proud to say that, that I think he's done a wonderful job on that, on that, uh, site. Architecturally, it's fitting. It fits in behind, uh, the Gannon's house. I, by the way, did meet with, uh, Mrs. Gannon, uh, out, out in front when we discussed the location of the sign. And, uh, she approved it at that stage. Um, I haven't heard from her since. Um, but, but she was, um, very pleased with, uh, the outcome of, of the previous approvals and what the result was. The, the request before you is born out of, of the, the shape of this lot, which is difficult, to say the least. It's the old Lungard Genitis Lot, as you remem, remember. Um, after that, Widder Dairies was there. There were, there was signage out by the street at one stage that, uh, was taken down. However, that's over two years ago. The fact is that, uh, when you come down Main Street, um, and if your sign is back twenty-five feet, which would be the required, uh, distance, um, you're impeded because there's, the Gannons, first of all, have a fence right up, um, to their, their sideline, uh, and, or their frontage. And, um, on the other side of the driveway, you have, um, um, wetlands which have, uh, quite a lot of growth there, and as you know, we can't cut that. That, that is not going to be allowed. So the fact is that, as you're coming down Main Street, which at times can be a busy street, and at times can be, uh, heavily traveled and, and fairly, uh, quick street, we think for safety purposes, the sign should be moved forward to the seventeen-foot spot. And we hope that you agree. The bottom line is that, that obviously, because the sign has to be on that side of the dri, driveway where it is, and because it's in kind of a neck of this lot, um, the closer to the street, the better. Although I think, um, as you can see from, um, the photo, the photos that we're showing you, the photos that we've submitted, that's closer than the seventeen feet, um, to the street, so. We measured, we measured, actually, we went out there and measured it. And, uh, these photos were done by the sign company, uh, just to give you the cons, conceptual picture of what the signs looked like. And, and you also know that there's signage on the building as well, uh, as you can see it over the door. The, the fact is that, um, if you were bound by the signage requirements of a, of a residential zone, uh, you could do a three-square-foot sign. Uh, that's not going to do us any good. You know, you need signage. This is a, uh, dental practice. We want people to safely come down the street, see the sign, have time, turn in, and, uh, not be surprised, not have people stopping short, uh, things of that nature, as a result of not having proper signage. It's an attractive sign. Um, it's, um, like I say, I think it's, uh, good for, uh, public safety and safety of those that are, are, um, going to be going to Songbird Dental and, uh, hopefully to another tenant, uh, when, when that becomes a reality. The, I don't think that, um, it is, uh, a derogation to the bylaw inasmuch as this is a longstanding, uh, nonconforming, um, parcel of land that's always had commercial uses on it. And they've always had signs out in front there. Um, it's a busy street. I don't think, um, there's a nuisance to this, uh, inasmuch as I think we're trying to solve a nuisance by virtue of the fact that, uh, we're trying to prevent any misunderstandings or any failure to see the entrance to this, um, dental practice. So, um, that's the basis of, of our appeal, and, uh, obviously, if you have any questions, we'd like to answer them.
Thank you so much. Um, Ms. McAllister, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay, thank you. So it looks very straightforward, but with your additional explanation, even more so. So, um, I agree as well that the shape of this lot, um, is a hardship. And it would, uh, had you been able to place the building in the neck, as you say, maybe a sign on the building would have been visible, but that makes absolutely no sense.
We wouldn't have been able to have any parking.
Exactly, or have safe means of egr, you know, getting in and out of the lot. So, um, that's my only comment. It makes sense to me. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to ask or may comment on before we open it up for public comment?
I mean, I think if the, if the Gannon house weren't there, you could put it twenty-five feet back. But with the house there, if you put it another ten feet back, you wouldn't see it till you were on top of it. People would be slamming their brakes on, so I'm completely persuaded.
All right, anything else? All right, this is a public hearing. So with that, are there any members of the public present who have a question or comment? Please come to the mic and state your name. All right, there being none, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing?
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, as well. Uh, if there's any discussion, let's have it. Otherwise, let's make a motion.
I move to approve two variances under section seven E to install signage with nonconforming sizes and setbacks at two thirty-five Main Street in the Residence B one and Rural B District.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
This is twelve Old Faith Road.
Do we have to vote on the request to withdraw?
Yeah. Uh, yes, that is coming. So, our, um, sixth public hearing was going to be for one nineteen Boston Turnpike, but they have made a request to withdraw. Can I have a motion?
Uh, move to approve request to withdraw.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as well. So moved, we will be withdrawing one nineteen Boston Turnpike. Thank you. Twelve Old Faith Road. This is two thirty-five Main Street, the signage. All right, it's now time for our seventh public he, hearing of the night to hear the appeal of, oh boy, Prokachanati Group. I might have gotten that right. LLC, eleven forty Reservoir Avenue, Cranston, Rhode Island, for two variances and two special permits to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section six, table one, section seven E, and section six, table one, footnote twenty-six, to operate a gas service station and banking machines with a drive-up window, and to construct freestanding signs with nonconforming setbacks, and to construct a structure which exceeds the maximum square footage requirements for non-gasoline sales functions on property located at one ninety-three Hartford Turnpike in the Limited Industrial District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate fifty-two, plot zero 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 one two five. So, the public hearing for this prop, property is a new public hearing. Thank you for coming to the table. If you could just state your name and tell us what you're here for, that would be great.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's Mark Donahue. I'm an attorney in Worcester with the firm of Fletcher-Tilton. With me this evening to present the petitions, uh, as described in the notice, Eric Correa from the Prokachanti, uh, Group. Took me a while to get it, but we're doing better. Uh, and Josh Swirling from Bowler Engineering, who are the, uh, civil engineers who have designed the site, uh, as, as indicated. As indicated, uh, by the notices, there are two special permits before you. One for a gasoline service station with related uses, which is a specially permitted use in both the underlying district and in the Route twenty overlay district. And a special permit for an outdoor drive-up ATM associated, uh, with the building on the east of the plan that you see there, which is aimed at a bank operation, uh, to be, uh, built. There are also variances with regard to the structure in the center, uh, that you see, which exceeds the thirty-five-hundred-square-foot limitation for accessory buildings. And the building also on the left, which is the car wash building that we'll describe as part of the variance. Finally, there are requests for variances with regard to the setback as to the two pylon signs that are located near the driveway, the Westerly driveway, uh, of Route twenty, and also along the Lake Street, which we'll describe as part of our application. As you can see from the plan before you, and as you may be aware, that the site, which consists of approximately three-point-nine acres of land, is located at the intersection of Lake Street and Hartford Turnpike. It is a presently undeveloped, uh, site in some level of, uh, disrepair, and is, uh, part of the goal overall of the development across the street to transform that area and encourage more development, uh, of different uses in this end of Route twenty. Uh, and with the development of the Edgemare, uh, facility, uh, into the Market Basket Retail Center and Flint Pond and Edgemare Crossing Residential, this continues that effort at further economic development, uh, down in that area. The, um, the, what's referred to in your bylaw as a gas station with related services, and is referred to in our application, uh, is more of a refueling energy service station, is in the old, uh, advertising parlance, not your father's old gas station. And the reason I say that is that more than fifty percent, or fifty percent of the pumps that are created at the time of opening the facility are dedicated to electric charging of vehicles. Uh, they are located to the rear of the building. Mr. Swirling can review with you the site plan in a moment, um, in more detail, so you can see where those are. They are, uh, those eight that are, are proposed are proprietary product of Tesla Corporation, that is available for their vehicles. Tesla, as you may be aware, is the predominant electric vehicle manufacturer in the United States, having presently a market share in excess of sixty-five percent of the market. And this is a proprietary product that is tied to, uh, an application that goes with those vehicles to direct drivers of those vehicles as to where they can charge to try to deal with a common occurrence with electric, uh, vehicles and one of the reticences for acquisition, which is range anxiety. How far can you go before you have to be able to recharge in some fashion? The reason, or that purpose of being not just a gas station where people come for a few moments, but come for a charging, with the Tesla product taking somewhere between twenty-five and thirty minutes for a complete charge, is part of the driver of the variance needed for the main store, the so-called convenience store, ca, convenience and cafe store that you see in the center of the plan. And what we have, I believe, is a short video that can give you at least an idea of how this isn't your typical convenience store. Rather, what it offers is other, uh, amenities, so that somebody who now has twenty-five or thirty minutes to kill can come in, access, uh, available wifi, answer some emails, do some phone calls in a setting, get a fresh bite to eat and the like. So, um, Josh, if you can pull up the video and you can, uh, bear with us, then we'd appreciate being on the chance to show it to you.
The, the sound should work.
Right on time.
Too well. There you go.
Just really wanted you to get into it.
Very immersive.
Get so hungry watching this every time.
So as you can get a sense that within the store, there's a lot going on beyond the typical type of convenience store and obviously operational components that one needs for a facility such as the refrigeration units for beverages, restrooms, the monitoring equipment for the fuel pumping stations and the like, which drives the need for the 5,680 square foot building that's proposed with regard to the store. The car wash is similar in that the car wash is fully automated. It is internal with a conveyor belt that a driver simply gets on and is automated through. And all the building essentially does, and we've got a few depictions of what it looks like, is enclose that conveyor system to keep it outside the elements and keep it protected in some fashion. And the entire size of that operation is also the similar 5,680 square feet of building size that's required to drive that. The special permit standards as set forth in your bylaw for both the gasoline service and the drive-through, we believe are met. The use is in harmony with the purposes and intent of the bylaw. The bylaw provides for these uses within these areas. It's particularly driven toward high-volume traffic, as much of the traffic that utilizes a facility such as this is pass-by traffic. We submitted to you a traffic impact and assessment study that reports that according to national data, more than 76% of the daily trips that go to a convenience store or gas station are pass-by, therefore are not being newly generated to the area, but are simply taking advantage of going by the facility. That means that it is an appropriate type of location, particularly given the significant improvements to Route 20 and Lake Street that are in the process of being completed as part of the work by the Town of Shrewsbury under the Massworks Grant with the widening, new lanes, new signalization makes that appropriate. The site itself presents well for the use. It does not require a significant earth movement in any type of fashion and works well within the site and the area. There are no negative environmental impacts or public health risks from the associated site. All of the equipment, and we can get into more detail should you wish, for the fueling is state-of-the-art with multiple and redundant type of alarm systems to make sure of any potential leaks and means to protect against leaks in some fashion. And the beginning of the effort to have electric charging stations, which Prokachani sees as basically expanding as time goes on and the market growing and replacing them, is actually consistent with environmental uses in some fashion. So we believe that the standards for a special permit for all of those uses are met. The special permit for the outdoor ATM that is part of the bank is really part of the fact that, given the area, it is reasonable to assume that the vast majority, if not all, of the patrons of the bank will be in their vehicles. And many people, for a number of reasons, would just as soon be able to do their banking remaining in that vehicle and access an ATM without having to exit it. It's not an area that has a lot of pedestrian activity in or around it now or in the future. With regard to the variances and the requirements, the, to some extent, it is one of scale. And that, and by that I mean that while the minimum size for a type of, this type of development in this district, it would be an 80,000 square foot lot. It's a 3.9 acre size lot. So the maximum building coverage that would be permitted under the bylaw would be 50%. In this case, it's reduced to 11.6%. And the impervious cover, which could be as much as 80%, is reduced to 56.2%. And by that, I think it shows that the building sizes as proposed are consistent with the development of the site appropriately. It's not creating too dense of a use, particularly which might exist with gasoline service stations closer to residential areas or denser areas in some fashion and therefore meets all of the requirements. The signage is driven really by the need to try to create the parking fields that you see there. And Josh, I don't know if you've got a more detailed plan that shows perhaps the signs. Maybe if I can just, hopefully the microphone can pick this up. The sign in question is in this small promontory that serves well to be able to direct traffic to be able to come down in some fashion. And while that is an adequate distance. Oops, sorry. If that's 19.7 feet off of the right-of-way line of Lake Street and therefore set back from Lake Street, meeting the requirements of the bylaw to be the entire 25 feet, we push that out into this area and need to reconfigure all of the traffic circulation that works for the site. And the primary effort of Bowler Engineering and the design was to ensure that vehicles could pass to, from, and through the site in a safe fashion. Similarly, the two pylon signs that appear at the Westerly entrance have the same issue with regard to this small area and therefore the proposed setback is only 15.8 feet as opposed to the required 25. We think that the purpose is met because of the width of the way of Hartford Turnpike as it has been improved and is still adequately set back to present any difficult, any issue with regard to impeding the site of passing motorists in any type of fashion. We're glad to answer any particular questions that the board may have as to either the special permits or the variance and would respectfully request your affirmative vote on all the relief requested. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. McAllister, would you like to?
I think Attorney Donahue walked through it well. I'll just mention that it's, this site will also go before the planning board. They've already submitted an application for site plan approval and special permit.
Thank you. Board members, before we open it up to public comment, can I hear some, can we hear some questions or comments from you? Who would like to go first?
I'll just say, I think it's going to be a great improvement for that particular corner and what's going on right there right now, so I do like what I'm seeing.
Thank you, Matt. Any other questions?
Just the way they, on the proposed no-left turn signs, those are just proposed signs or are they actually going to be signs?
The no-left with regard to Hartford Turnpike?
Correct.
Those are, unless, those are governed by the site plan approval, but we would be certainly pushing to have those in. The site is particularly designed with the way that the curb cuts are established to really preclude any type of lefty intern movement out other than onto Lake Street.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? I have a couple of questions. I'll kind of take these one at a time. So the special permit for the gasoline service stations, I don't have a comment or question about that. Could you just point out on the plan again where the banking machine drive-through?
Sure. Want to take them through that, Josh?
Yes, thank you. Okay.
There's a by-pass lane as well.
Thank you. And my next question. The signage, I really, I personally have no issue with the placement. You made a great explanation of where all three of those variants, variances will be. I do have a question about, I want to talk about, a little bit about the, what you term non-gasoline sales is. And so the variance you're asking with regard to, whoa, that was loud. So you're asking for a variance in accordance with Section 6 Table 1, footnote 26, that any non-gasoline sales function of a gasoline service use may not exceed the 3,500 square feet. So can we just hear a little bit more about that?
Sure.
Or repeat? That's fine.
Let me touch on both.
Sure.
So, while we've had a fair amount of discussion with town staff with regard to the plan and the approach here, because it was an interesting situation where the uses are both permitted in the underlying district, but you also have the overlay district, which imposes different dimensional restrictions and has other impacts on it. And ultimately, the direction was with work with the building inspector, that the convenience store café and the car wash were considered the related uses to the gas service station. So they fall under the entire umbrella of the use in some fashion. Your bylaw has in the footnote basically saying those buildings that do something other than gas can't be bigger than 3,500 square feet. So our variance is to permit the convenience store café that you saw in the video to exceed that by the 2,180 square feet as proposed. The hardship is really in trying to achieve the entire setting that unlike a typical convenience store affiliated with a gas station, in which one might only be staying for a few moments to pick up something, either while they're fueling or quickly running in to pick up something that they need, we're hoping people will actually come in, stay, parenthetically, spend money for the 25 or 30 minutes while they're charging their car. To do that, they need a place to go and do everything else. While we're also doing everything that a typical convenience store does within a building that's limited to 3,500 square feet and therefore has some back-of-the-house functions that are necessary. Restrooms obviously being lead ones, the equipment that is affiliated with the fueling pump stations and the safety equipment and the like. So for all of those reasons, we're seeking the variance to be able to take that building to the additional 2,180 square feet. The car wash building is really just a function of the fact that we're trying to uncover what is a conveyor system function. And Everett, I don't know if you want to describe in any detail anything special about the conveyor system, but it's basically just trying to encapsulate it so it can operate particularly between November and March in an effective fashion.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, we require like 150-foot tunnel, so we need, we need that square footage to make our operation work.
Okay, thank you. So there's two arguments here. The fact that you're going to have the Tesla charging stations, if you didn't have this extra space for those owners to spend their half an hour, they'd be sitting in their cars or, I guess they'd be sitting in their cars. And who does that? We've seen electric chargers elsewhere at places of employment or outside restaurants and I get it. And the other is the car wash, you're saying the fact that it's this thing that's going to operate off-season and needs this conveyor in itself directed, I guess, it needs that additional space because of this conveyor? Is that okay?
Yeah, to house the equipment essentially.
Okay, thank you. And I think I might have had one more question and then I'll turn it over to you, Peter. No, I think you covered it. I love the concept, I love the fact that you're adding these electric car chargers. Oh, I did have one question about parking requirements. I'm assuming that those spaces don't count towards the parking requirement, correct? Because that would be a little strange in my mind. Because cars will be there for a purpose. So, let's see.
Suppose if you're not charging, you're probably not allowed to park there.
Right. So I guess I want to say that. You'll, well, are there going to, are there, is there signage by the Tesla chargers, you know, asking people to not park their cars there and, and charging is 30-minute limit, things like that? And are they included in your parking requirement numbers?
They're not included in our parking requirement numbers. We exceed the number that is required. I would say that I don't think extra signage is always necessary in front of those things because it's almost inherent that you're going to be charging if you pull into one. I think additional signage might not be necessary to keep folks out of those spots.
Okay, and thank you. And it's not like the convenience store is a place you'd want to stay all day, right?
I don't know, that food looked great. I could be there for coffee and a snack and...
I think also the location, which in this case is to the rear of the store, really to one coming to the site, you've got the parking that's immediately adjacent to the convenience store. You've got parking on the other side of the pumps essentially. So it's going to be a very unusual situation where one doesn't see a readily available parking space and goes to the rear. You may have noticed in the video, more than just a sign or a small piece, the Tesla component has its own advertising component to it. And the reason is, is because the whole program is developed so that people who have no familiarity with Shrewsbury not only can find the site because the car takes them there, but then can find the charging station because the car takes them there too.
Yeah, it's great. All right, thank you. Do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I would just say, you know, I think you've clearly got an unusually shaped lot that limits and determines a lot of what you can do in terms of the program on the site, so I get that and signage and everything as well. In terms of special permit requirements, I think this is going to be a vast improvement over what's there. It's certainly not going to cause any kind of nuisance. I guess the only question I have is, you know, this isn't, like you said, it's not your mom and pop's convenience store. When is a convenience store not a convenience store if it's serving all this food and everything and is planning, happy with that being a sort of subsidiary use to the gas station as opposed to it being something else?
If I might, and certainly Ms. McAllister, because you know, that was part of our discussions essentially with staff. Because the issue of whether it's a related use and whether the car wash is a related use, can, you can argue on both sides of the coin in some fashion. The retail uses either as a restaurant, if that's what you wanted to call it, or a car wash are permitted in the Lake or the Route 20 overlay district.
Yeah, permitted anyway, so.
The problem is that you can't have parking in the front yard in the Route 20 overlay district. So the parking that you saw on the plan along Route 20 would then need the variance for that. So we were basically balancing what the relief was and felt it would be more direct for this board to come in and say it was the, the overall use was there and therefore it fell within that use.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. And I think also the, as you explained very well, the Tesla chargers make that all make a lot more sense as far as why it's linked together. You can't just go and get a Gatorade and a pack of cigarettes or whatever if you're going to be there for half an hour, right? So this all makes sense to me.
Okay. So, board members, before I open it up for public comment, we are looking at two variances and two special permits. So far, I'm hearing support for all of those. Do you have any questions otherwise to, me to believe otherwise? Okay. Now, this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public present who have a question or a comment? I remind the public to please keep their questions and comments brief and to the point and to ask them through me, the chair. Yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address again.
Hi, this is Paul, 79 Lakeside Drive. I had a question on the exact location. Is it, is it adjacent to the new Market Basket or is it on Lake Street?
It's across the street from...
Across the street. And we'll show a map, it looks like. This will help.
So here's Edgemere and here's our parcel.
Okay.
And 20.
So on the bottom is where the new Market Basket will be, then there's Route 20 and where that red...
No, it looks like a great project.
It's in front of the asphalt plant.
Oh, that's what I was, okay. Regarding, like, I don't want to get ahead of myself, an opening or like, or when the project might start or finish, is there any type of timeframe that might be in the works?
So Ms. McAllister, do you want to speak to the site plan review or anything, where the project stands in its full process?
They've just applied for a site plan and special permit at the next, for the next planning board hearing, but I would probably turn it back over to the applicant to speak to what their timeline is then.
We have the local entitlements, your board, the planning board, to go through and get that and we'll... And we're moving those obviously forward as indicated. We have state permitting. We have to go through the MEPA process in order to qualify to obtain Mast Dot approval for the curb cuts that are shown. That's a process that's going to take some time. It's probably now, it's a year from now.
Thank you so much.
And then we have to build it.
Understood. So they're just at the beginning of the process.
Well, once we get all the approvals, it's like usually six months to build from the start date, so we put them up pretty quick.
So just to clarify, once approvals are all obtained, it can be six months to build?
Yeah, but we don't know how long the MEPA is going to take.
True.
They've thrown a new component into it starting January 1 this year, so it's all kind of.
Iffy, okay.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions from the public or a follow-up question? No? Okay, great. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Board members, would you like to discuss anything at this time?
Not me.
I'm also fine. I think I mentioned I'm, I'm leaning towards, well, I would approve both variances and both special permits as, at this time. All my questions have been answered and I'm comfortable moving forward. Anyone else have a question or comment? All right, with that, you have a very long.
Got it.
Motion and we're going to do them all together since I did not hear anything otherwise.
Makes sense. So I move to approve two variances and two special permits pursuant to section six, table one, section seven E, and section six, table one, footnote 26, to operate a gas service station and banking machines with a drive-up window and to construct freestanding signs with non-conforming setbacks and to construct a structure which exceeds the maximum square footage requirements for non-gasoline sales functions at 193 Hartford Turnpike Limited Industrial District.
Second.
Friendly amendment, if I might?
Oh, yeah.
I think I heard structure in the singular. It should be in the plural.
Structures, right. And to construct structures which exceed the maximum square footage requirements for non-gasoline sales functions.
Once again, can I have a second?
Second.
All right, wonderful. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Thank you so much and good luck with the lengthy process ahead of you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right, so that is our last public hearing of the night, but we do have new business. So correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. McAllister, I believe we've, we've gone through all of our hearings and we're on to new business.
Just a reminder to the chair, if you don't mind?
Yes, please.
You don't have to take public comment under these new business.
Ah, thank you.
This is going to be, you're welcome to ask whoever's in attendance to speak to their request in front of you tonight.
Okay.
But beyond that, you do not have to follow.
Okay, wonderful. And I see you put everything all on one for this last hearing. One sign-up sheet. Okay, one.
Did we do for 34?
For 34, I think. All of that. All right. So board members, we have three items for new business. One is a de minimis change. I hope you had time to, I assume you had time to look in our Google Drive. There was a decision made in November of 2021 and we're here to hear, we will be hearing from Richard Ricker. Hi, Richard.
Hi.
About this de minimis change, so I'll turn it over to you, Richard.
Thank you to the chair and members, thank you for entertaining this tonight. When Mr. Parkett went to take, when they did actual measurements in the field, they determined that they, they were in error as to the section of the building that needed to be raised. The true measurements came in, as you can see, a little bit less, thereby increasing the non-conformity of the setback a little bit for the, for the, the final building. It's still a great improvement, obviously, from what's there now. It's a removal of that garage section, as you may recall from the original hearings. But instead of, I think it was 13 feet, it's now down to 10.
Point three. 10.3.
10.3.
Looks like 13, from 13.3 to 10.3.
Yes. But it, unfortunately, it happened as a result of measurements on the ground when, when they, they got ready to do the work, actually. And when he went to final design for the building permit purposes, that's when they discovered the problem. So he's asking you to allow that, I would suggest slight change as a de minimis change to the approval that you've granted him in that permit.
Okay, great.
Did I hit that right?
I think so. Let me, yes, if you would like to.
No, please.
Just add one last thing that I think would help, be helpful for the board is we've had some conversation about our most recent town meeting bylaw changes, but I want to call your.
Oh, I wasn't going to do that. Yeah, okay.
You wasn't? You weren't?
No, but that, that's okay.
I think.
This would be approved otherwise, yes.
You, well, as the applicant, would you like me to not?
Please.
Go there, but I guess all I was going to say is we have a, a section under our bylaw now in section four that says that a special permit is no longer needed to reduce or, or decrease a non-conforming portion of a structure, right? So the demolition of a non-conforming structure does no, no longer requires a special permit. So in that respect, that is why we have not made this, made this appeal come back before you as a formal appeal and is instead just going through this de minimis change request in order to get proper recording procedure.
Got it.
Right, because if, if we had not gone forward with the previous appeal, there wouldn't be something recorded granting that 13 feet.
Exactly.
And we could just say, well, we're reducing the setbacks of, you know, building department wouldn't have an issue. But in speaking with the building department, they felt that it would be better for us to come back and, and at least do it as a de minimis if you, if you felt that that was appropriate. The, the bottom line is that if we threw away the previous appeal, we wouldn't even have to do anything.
Yes, understood. Okay, thank you so much for that explanation. I have no issue with this. I see it as a de minimis change myself. Otherwise, so we made a decision to approve the special permit back in November of 2021 and something slight, has slightly changed in my opinion and I would say that our approval back then holds true, so I look at it as a de minimis change. Does anyone see otherwise?
I think, I think three feet is bigger than I'd like for de minimis, but given the context of the change in the, the bylaws, I think it's fine. Yeah, because otherwise you wouldn't be here at all.
True.
So I, I don't think we can, we can't happy about that.
Okay, and so that's interesting. And yes, so I would find it small enough change, but you would find it not so small, but because you don't even have to.
Yeah, it's the same, yeah.
Understood. All right, so in that, with that, we, I do need a motion to, I don't know how I should say it. To consider the change as a de minimis change?
To approve it as a de minimis change.
You can say de minimis. In my letter, I will say that you've used the power under, oh my goodness, I can get that, I can get that section of the, of your rules.
For someone else to say the motion?
Let's do that to make sure.
Well, no, I think it's still, it's enough to be de minimis. I don't have a problem saying de minimis.
Sounds great.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so in that case, I move to approve the de minimis change to our decision as to 47 to 47A North Quincyman Avenue of November 2021.
Great.
Second.
Wonderful. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well, thank you. And our next new business is 334 Grafton Street has asked for a request for an extension. Do we have to make a motion and approve all that or is this informative?
Take a vote.
Okay, we do.
Yeah, this requires a vote.
Is this you too?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. You may recall.
Introduce yourself for the.
Yeah, who are you?
For the record, it's Richard Ricker and I do that for the record now.
That's good, I'm just kidding.
Not really advertising.
Yeah, we don't know, yeah.
With respect to this one, since this was approved, we've had COVID, we've had all kinds of issues barreling at anybody who wants to build a building and, and a commercial building especially. Residential buildings aside, you know, we know what the housing market has done, that has not, the COVID apparently hasn't hurt that at all. But as far as commercial building, the cost of building, commercial building has increased enormously, to say the least. The fact is that Paul's run up against that as well as supply, supply chain issues and financing issues because he, he's been trying to deal with some other properties in order to finance this particular project. So frankly, he needs the, he needs another six months. He needs the six months in order to put his act together to get this thing done. It runs out shortly, the, the variance runs out, the variances run out very shortly. So I raced frankly to get this in this, this past week in order to get it before you because if frankly you don't grant it, then, then he's done. So I'd ask that you give him the six months. Needless to say, there's been a number of extenuating circumstances that have affected anybody's ability to develop.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't think there's any harm to, to the request either.
So this means it's, it was two years ago, right?
Yes.
The two-year, okay.
Can I just ask, has anything changed at the site at all? Is everything basically the same as when it was presented to us last?
Well, he's, he's done a little bit of work on, on the driveway, not, not, not a whole lot. He has machines up there frankly ready to go, but he hasn't started the actual project.
Okay, but nothing that would have been relevant then to our decision?
No.
That would change the outcome in any way?
No, because if he, because if he had, and that's part of the financing end of this whole thing.
Right.
If he had, then we could say we started the project.
Right, 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 yeah, right.
So he needs to get started before the, before the end of the.
Right, right.
So we're specifically, you're asking us specifically to approve a six-month extension?
Correct.
Okay.
Which is what is allowed by statute.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
I would just say in light of the extraordinary times, I don't, I don't see a particular issue with it, but I could be persuaded otherwise.
I don't have an issue. I'm, I'm wondering how many more we're going to have, but I, it's the way it is.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so can we have a motion?
I would move to approve the request for an extension as to 334 Grafton Street.
Second.
All right, wonderful. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well, thank you. And the last.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yes, thank you, Richard. See ya. And the last bit of new business is to review our new zoning board of appeals deadline Is that in the, it's Google Drive?
It is.
I have it in front of me, but does everyone else know? Okay, under new business.
It's not necessarily going to affect the board members. We're simply changing our application deadline and that's because the town manager's office has asked all boards and commissions to advertise through the community advocate and not the Telegram and Gazette.
Just listening.
Okay, and let's, and we're making the public know here as well.
Yes, and so starting at the end of July, we're proposing new zoning board of appeals application deadlines to fit in with the, the schedule of the community advocates' legal, legal advertising team.
I see. And whereas it used to be a Tuesday, it's now going to be a Thursday.
It's a Thursday before the hearings. So right now, we take.
Yeah, it's very tight.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep, so Mondays, we would have our meeting. The applications we do the Thursday before for the following meeting.
So three days later.
Three days before. So as staff, we would be processing new applications and preparing, preparing your appeals.
So maybe we could say it this way. For example, on Monday, July 25, we have a zoning board of appeals meeting and you will be taking, the office will be taking applications for the following meeting on Thursday, July 28, which is three days after our meeting.
Yes, thank you for, in that month, I, I apologize. Yep, that one is going to be. You can see some of them later in the year are earlier than the deadline, depending on how the, the four weeks fall.
Right.
Oh, good.
But you're, you're correct. So the next deadline, if this is accepted, is Thursday, July 28, 2022, barring tomorrow's deadline, I should be correct.
Correct, by 12 noon. All right, so do you, as the zoning board of appeals, do we need to approve this, I guess so?
Yes, please.
We do, okay.
All right. Happy to answer any questions, obviously.
Well, I move to approve the new zoning board of appeals deadline dates as proposed.
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well, thank you. And we have made it through our agenda for June 27. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well, thank you so much.